My computer says it's five o'clock. I'm gonna go ahead and open the meeting. And does anybody know if Judy is planning on joining us?
I assume she is. She's been on email and reviewing and providing feedback on minutes. I have no reason to think she's not attending. She's at the Cape, I believe, so she may have internet access challenges, but it didn't seem to get in the way of her.
Nope, she's here. Admit, there she is.
Her ears must be burning. Okay. Now the party can start.
Okay. We've already opened the meeting and call to order. The first thing on the agenda is site plan update for Three River Road. Brent, do you have that?
I do. I'm wondering. I don't see any of the representatives of Three River Road here. I did invite them, didn't get a confirmation whether they were. I guess we'll I guess we can start and see if any of them drop in. Let me share. Let me share my screen here. So what I'm sharing, I have both the so you should be able to see this site plan, which was the original site plan. Let me see if I can make it. Is that? I can make it a little bit bigger. Sorry. So this was the original July 27th of basically last year, the plan that we approved. And then I was really hoping that DMCTC rep would attend, so they can kind of walk us through all of these changes.
Excuse me, Brent, could you give me that date on this plan again, please?
So this is the original plan. It looks like it's dated 2021, July 27th. And it's in the OneDrive folder for Three River Road. This is the site plan that they submitted when we reviewed and approved their site plan. And they've now, what I'm going to share is a an update that they've sent us dated this year, 2022, July 18th. So it's sort of like that you're, I'm still showing you the old plan. And maybe the places where you really want to focus your attention are in this area. Maybe a little bit in this area, so sort of like the north side, the west side, and the south side. All right. So kind of look at this, hold that in your minds for a moment. And then I'll slip to what they've just submitted. Okay. So what appears to have happened, if we look on the north side, what used to be a mobile refrigeration unit is they've still reserved space for it. I'm going to flip back to the old plan, just so you can, so we're looking here on the north side. So they had originally shown four of these mobile refrigeration units on the north side. I see Jared is here.
Hey, 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 guys. Sorry about that. Oops. I, I think I'm on this. I think I'm on this call now. You guys can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry about that.
Very good. So Jared, I was just in lieu of you or your representative here, I was trying like this is the original plan that I'm sharing. You can see this.
Yeah. Yep.
And then I was flipping to the, the updated plan and trying to highlight for the board members where it appears there have been some changes. And I think the real, so I'm gonna yield the floor in a moment. So you can watch in your own words, these changes and just be clear, I think what we are trying to determine tonight is whether we're simply going to be able to say, you know, this is okay without a new with something short of another full formal site review or okay, so that's kind of where we are.
Great. Okay. So in the prior version, the rear portion of the building was identified as part of the structure on the original Berkshire Design Plan.
So when you say the rear.
Yeah, exactly.
What do you mean by the rear?
Exactly right. Yeah. And so there was a 30 by 15 mobile unit that was there that was affixed to the building. And so what we would like to do in this new plan is replace it with a smaller container that's eight by 40. So the same size as a, as a standard shipping container, which is itself fewer total square feet than the prior 30 by 15.
Okay, so let me just again show people the original plan on the west side. So here it was depicted as, you know, essentially a continuous part of the building, which was really more for illustration purposes. Is that accurate?
Yes, yes. And so when you guys came, we walked through, there was a door that connected the the shipping unit to the building that made it part of a single, a single space. And I apologize, I'm, I'm in the car with with a small child, he probably can hear in the background.
Okay, all right. So this is again the old plan. So now switching back to the new plan. So again, so you can sort of see how that west side depiction has been altered. But you have not extended beyond the original line of the
Right. And that would be within the setback. We, we, I think we're fine for setbacks on all of the changes that we've made. We're just I'm in the kind of the summary here is that we're rotating structures 90 degrees. We're staying within the same setback. And then we're moving, we, we're asking to move shipping containers from the north side of the building to the south side of the building. So there's an existing 1,000 gallon propane tank that wasn't visible in the origin, or wasn't a visible period previously because it was in the vegetation and behind a great deal of, behind a great deal of junk on the, on AI's facility. So that's now depicted.
Okay, where is that?
That's on the south side of the building. It's the small oblong white shape that's, that's there.
That's what I'm showing right here. Okay.
That's right. Yes, exactly. Oh, hey, Tim, how you doing? And then
Just hold on, just I want to make, keep everyone, since we are trying to clearly understand the changes from what we originally approved to decide the significance of these changes, I just want to keep walking people back to the original plan. And, and they get the same scale, so people can follow along well. Okay, all right. So yeah, so this is the original plan where that tank is not depicted. And then the new plan, it is. Okay. And that's on the south side. And it seems like this is the area of the most significant change where these mobile units were. All right, so let's look at original plan on the south side. So this was the original depiction.
Right. And so we've moved them east and away from the, away from the the setback.
Okay.
The three eight by 40 previous shown on the north side of the building. Sorry, the, the four eight by 40 containers shown on the south side of the building have been shifted 50 feet east. And these are all within setbacks and also entirely within weightily. Everything that we're doing has been, you know, pretty carefully placed so that it remains in weightily.
And people can see on this plan, this line is the weightily Hatfield border boundary. Okay. So question, Jared, for these mobile units, if I look at the original plan, as I'm now showing, were these were, these four depicted, I guess it was listed as four mobile refrigeration units, eight by 40 in the original plan here. And, and oriented roughly east to west. They were, in this depiction, they're not enclosed in any fencing. Is that correct?
That's right. Yes. And there, there's no, there's no statutory or regulatory requirement that we do that. We just added abundance of caution, put up a fence.
Okay, so now I'm going to go back, this, what we're still showing here is the old plan where the container units are basically out in the open without a fence around them. And now I'm going to switch to the new plan. So this shows, well, really now there are five units or six units. And there's a fence around all six. Is that correct?
That's the proposal, yes. And, and just to be, and just to be clear, the only things that exist today are the two, are the two units that are inside the same area as we had previously depicted, simply rotated 90 degrees.
Okay, so that's these two units is what you're referring to.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And then you have plans for four more.
Yes. And so this plan is depicting what we would like to do with the next set of shipping containers. So I, I just want to make sure that, that everybody is clear that we have not proceeded to do this, proceeded to do this. We, we, we have just stayed within the prior approved plan and, and just rotated shipping containers. But in our next, this proposed plan, we are asking to move some of the containers that were previously depicted on the north side to the south side and away from, and away from, you know, other residences, further from our neighbors.
I see. So I just asked. Go ahead, Judy.
Those containers, all of those containers are the same specs that we saw previously on the plan. They're all cold storage containers.
They're all eight by 40 shipping containers.
Well, the ones that are there, anyway.
The close charge of the two to the left, is that right?
I, I, I'm so sorry, Don, I couldn't, I couldn't hear what you said.
Yeah.
The two to the left are
Branch has got them highlighted now.
So my understanding, Jared, I, my understanding, I think what Judy's asking is that in this original plan, which I'm going to switch back to.
Let's not, let's not flip back and forth.
Okay, all right. In the original plan, so this is the new plan, sorry. In the, I think in the original plan, it was our understanding that all of the mobile units on the south side of the building were going to be, you know, they were described as, I think, mobile refrigeration units. And now the two units that are actually there, is it accurate to say that they are not in fact mobile refrigeration units?
Yes, they are. It is accurate to say that. They are mobile con, conaxes, shipping containers. And we are using them for other purposes than refrigeration.
Okay.
But from the outside, you know, they're from the kind of the the, the view of it, they are indistinguishable from from shipping containers.
And what purposes are you using them for?
We, we're using them for a very similar process to what we would have used the refrigeration containers, which is to, to, to store and process material, cannabis material.
I don't, it seems the verbiage on the previous plan indicated that all the processing would occur inside the building.
Right, this is for storage, not processing.
He just said storage and processing.
Yeah. So yeah, I think it's true that in this new plan, the, so that there is now processing occurring outside of the, what's depicted as the processing building. So now processing is occurring outside in two of these mobile units and other mobile units are being used for cold storage. Still true, Jared?
So there is also cold storage inside these units, and they are also being used for storage.
I understand.
Is there any processing going on in there?
Uh, yes. And there would be processing going, there, there could be processing going on inside other, other cold storage units.
Okay.
All right. So it also looks like what you're proposing to do. So in the area that I've depicted, this is the, the same area in your original plan for the four mobile units. But what you, it looks like what you want to do is now expand the, the set of units, you know, it's now gone from four to six, and it looks like the area to to for all six of these units is, you know, you've extended the rectangle eastward. You know, along, along the Three River Road processing building. So that area is larger in this plan than it was before.
Yeah, and we have, and we have moved, or we have, we've eliminated the, the containers on the north side of the building.
Sure, sure. Okay, very good. So in terms of square footage, is that net out to zero? When you subtract
I, I believe it. Once, once you do the exchange, I think it comes out very, very close to zero. But, but I would ask, I would ask Chris Chamberlain what that is precisely, and I can get back to you on that.
And Jared, well, I've got you.
My recollection.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Judy.
Well, no, Tom.
I'm questioning the propane tank, Jared. Is that, is that privately owned by you all, or is that owned by a propane vendor and who maintains it?
That's owned by AI and Carol. That, that's not ours. It was, it was there previously. It was just hidden by, hidden by the, we, we didn't know it was there. Only upon clearing it did we discover that there was a 1,000 gallon propane tank back there. So that's AI and AI.
Is it going to be removed or are you going to maintain it?
Our, our expectation is that we will maintain it. Because I think it's being used by the building. And so when we, you know, finally move into the building, you know, we would like to make use of it. But, but it is, it is going with the building, staying with the building, is what I mean.
Well, if you look at the original, you can see that that propane thing is visible from the air.
What I'm getting at is the maintenance of it, who's been maintaining it, who's going to maintain it? And
Oh, yes, it has been maintained by AI and Carol.
Is this something
We would, we would talk
I'm fire chief.
I'm sorry, would you say that one more time?
Yeah, is it, is it, now that this has been discovered, is this something that the, that the fire chief needs to be aware of? I, I don't know. I'm just
Oh, he's very much aware of it. He is absolutely aware of it. So Chief Hanham has been to the site many, many times. And we went through a lengthy permitting process with the state fire marshal that involved extensive discussion with Chief Hanham. And so he has been through this site countless times. So he's, he's very much aware that that is there. And so we, we would take over maintenance of the, of the 1,000 gallon tank, tank.
Thank you. And I'll just add that I spoke on the phone with the, with Fire Chief Hanham about this property. And he confirmed that he has that all of his, you know, he has no concerns with how they've been preparing and handling the site, that all the permits are in work.
The building permit application that we saw referenced additional processing containers and also moving a fence. Potentially moving a fence, I think. Could you explain that?
Thanks, Judy. Yeah, good question. So the fence moving would be to extend to enclose the additional containers.
So to clarify, the original plan did not put a fence around any of the containers on the south side. So in the new plan, you're going to extend the, you know, you have a fence around the two that are there at the moment. And you're going to extend that fence to enclose all of the units that would be there.
Yes, exactly the intention. Yeah, thanks. Thanks for that clarification.
And the only entry gate would be the double gates on the east side?
We would like to have an entry gate to the backside since our, you know, our cultivation operation is behind it. And it would make it convenient to be able to access it from the back.
And would that be vehicular or just for personnel?
Single, single man door.
Okay.
Person.
Yeah.
I don't remember what we asked about odor control on the storage containers, but if there's processing going on, that seems a more significant question. Can you talk to that, please?
Sure. So these are closed loop cold storage. There, there, there really isn't much of a smell emitted from these things. It's using butane closed loop processing. That's, you know, that's really the only, the only activity that goes on there, either distilled oil or frozen material yet to be extracted and turned into crude or, or butane hash oil. And so the, the odor, the odor really is, is not, is not present at, at that point. You, you need to heat it up either through, you know, a cart or a dab, a dab rig in order to elicit the, in order to elicit the, the smells. So at, at the point that it's, you know, in this space, it, it really doesn't have an odor. So, so Don and Brent both visited the site. I, I would ask them whether, if they hadn't known that, you know, that this is the activity that we are using the site for, that, that there would have been any odor detectable at, at Three River Road. I guess that's, no, yeah.
That's, that's true.
Same.
My husband and I drove by Saturday night with the air conditioner on and doors closed and everything closed. There was a noticeable smell driving by. So is that or is that what would be producing odors right now?
Yeah, it would be the field. I mean, so it's, it's immediately adjacent to the, to the field and, and we are in the midst of harvest right now. So this is, this is, this is the most odorous time of year right now.
And when we were out there last week, even though the wind was coming from the north and they were harvesting, I didn't notice. I don't know if you did or not, Brad.
I didn't notice an odor. I, I'll, I will also observe that that is about Seven River Road, not three, not Five River Road or Three River Road.
Right.
So odor is an issue, but I think what Sarah was asking is, is it possible, since we're focusing at the moment on Three River Road? And I think the Judy's raised the question of, is the fact that there is now processing going on in these containers, is that creating the potential for a significantly different, you know, odor profile than we might have faced, just knowing that there was processing going on enclosed within a building? And I, and I think we
So the, yeah, sorry, Brad.
And I, and I just want to then separate the fact that it may be hard to to detect whether odors are coming from something going on in these containers versus odors wafting from the field at, at Seven River Road. Do the, do the containers have air purifying with them as, as in the processing section, the original processing section? These containers, you get the impression that they're just steel boxes. Do they have
Yeah, that's the, the original containers did not. The, the frozen shipping, or the shipping containers designed to hold frozen material had no odor control in them. All of it was frozen. And the material that we handle in, in these boxes is also frozen. So, so we do a, a type of processing called butane hash oil production. And it requires the input or, you know, the predominant way of doing it and the way that we do it requires the material to be frozen, deeply frozen throughout. So the storage containers that were previously approved and discussed would have hold, held frozen material, would not have had filters on them. And similarly, these boxes, you know, contain frozen material in them and then the finished product. And it, it, it's, it's very similar.
One other thing I noticed in comparing the two plans, Jared, is that this line of shrubbery and fencing has been relocated further to the south beyond the setback. This is much of a, I don't think that's, anyway, I'm just curious about that.
Yes. If, if there's, you know, if there's an, an issue with that, we can certainly talk to Chris about it.
I'm not sure there is. I'm maybe, and, and I know Don cautioned me against flipping back and forth. I'm going to respectfully ask Don to give me one more flip. So again, this is the original plan where it put the, the line of shrubbery and fencing, screening much closer to the Much closer to the 50 foot setback line and, and further, you know. North, north of the property boundary and the new plan is moving it a little bit further to the south. I don't see. I don't necessarily see an issue there. I just wanted to highlight that in case somebody other than me sees, has a question about that. But other than that, I don't think I have any further questions about this. And maybe before we entertain any motions about what to do, there are some other. See if anyone else on the call has any questions. Does that make sense, Tom? So maybe I'll just make it clear that the floor is open if anyone wants to come off mute and speak up if they have any questions about. What's, what these changes are. And that, the, what the planning board needs to decide tonight is whether. We, these changes merit a whole round of a new site plan. Approval process with all that entails. Well, hearing nothing, maybe what I'll do is I'm going to try, I'm going to. I think what I'd like to do here, so far, I'm not. I'm personally not hearing anything that is meriting. A new formal site plan review. And because that, right now, the, the building inspector is holding back the building permit. And so DMCTC cannot proceed and move forward with their business until they get that building permit. And so it would be, if we insist on a site plan review, we're going to be adding that delay. Plus the costs to the. Applicants into the town to do all of this. But that's just my opinion at the moment. Maybe what I'll do is. So we can have a sort of a formal vote and discussion on the issue. I'll make a motion that I'm actually probably going to vote against, but I'm going to move that we schedule. A formal site review of this new plan.
Could you stop sharing, sharing perhaps?
Sure. So this is sort of a test motion to see what people think, whether we need to go through all of this. And sort of to do this in a more formal way, I'll make the motion that will schedule a. Formal site review of the new plan. The question is, if, I guess if, so is there a second for that motion? Alright, so then we'll have a discussion and have a vote on whether to do this. And having made the motion, I'll argue against the motion. So I would vote against this motion.
I will vote against it too.
You're muted, Sarah. You are muted. You know you're muted.
The cat came to visit, so I muted. I was very interested if the Butters had anything to say and none of them have said anything. Or seemed to have issues with the movement of the fence and the expansion of the fence and the shipping containers. So.
And I guess the, why I, you know, when I, when I have, having been there and looked at it. You know, with all of this happening on the south side. You know, adjoining a big open field as far away from a Butters in Waitly. I'm having a hard time personally seeing how these changes impact health and safety and the kinds of things that we are concerned with. And I am thus finding it hard to justify putting us in DMCTC through a whole new site plan approval process. So is that, you're sort of concurring with that, Sarah?
I am concurring because it does move things farther away from the Butters and I have, we haven't heard any, anything pro or con from them. So yes, I think this is. Moves it farther away from a Butters and more towards the open field.
I'll agree with that on the condition that we get written approval from both the fire chief and the police chief. That, that these changes don't materially affect anything.
Personally, and he.
I want something in the file, Don. I want, this is, this is for the file. And in writing sign or an email, but something that we can point to. That's for the record. I think that's important in this case. And for all of the security stuff under the bylaw. And I think the other thing I would like to do is express my unhappiness that. DMCTC did not come to us before they filed for the building permit, which I think is extremely. Poor form.
Apologies on that, Judy. We will not, we will not do that again.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, where are you?
I'm opposed to the motion. Let's move forward.
Okay, so, so I guess we'll. We'll call for a vote to see whether the motion, so voting I means that we're going to do another site. Plan review and voting nay means we're not. And if the motion fails, then I think we can. Decide what we're going to do in lieu of a site plan review, which would accommodate Judy's comments. So, Don, you want to run the vote?
All those. In favor, vote by saying I. A group roll call, Sarah?
No, but again, we need to have the items from, that we need from Judy, that Judy would like from, and me too, from the chiefs.
Don, no. Tom? Brad?
No.
Motion fails.
And Judy?
I'm sorry, Judy.
The motion fails and so then what we're gonna. So do we need, do we need to do a simple, a formal vote? Well, I guess we don't, right? We're basically not going to do.
No, I think we have to approve the changes subject to any conditions we want.
Okay, alright. So why don't Judy, you make.
Or approve the plan. I guess the plan would be.
Yeah, yeah. So make the motion so that Mary can note it down.
I move that we approve the plan as stated, whatever it is. Subject to the condition that we have written. Evidence that the, or written approvals from the. Fire chief and the police chief that it's acceptable to them.
Okay, that is dated seven twenty-three, twenty-two.
And I will second that motion.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Sarah?
Yes.
Don, I. Tom?
I.
Judy?
I.
And Brad?
I.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay. Very good. So Jared, as soon as we receive, and I expect Judy is okay with this. We received emails from the Waitly Fire Chief and the Waitly Police Chief. Providing their approval for the proposed changes. That they are consist, that they're not adversely impacting the health and safety of Waitly residents. And upon the planning board receiving those letters or emails. The planning board will then notify the. Building inspector that we have no concerns with the building permit.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you guys very, very much.
Okay. Very good.
And apologies again on, on getting the sequence wrong. It comes from. Just not, not knowing the, the sequence, the appropriate sequence, but we will not do that again.
Sure.
Technically, if you change a tree, we're supposed to know.
Okay, understood, understood.
Okay.
And I've, in my conversations with the building inspector, he seems to feel that. He seems to have learned a lesson that his judgments about what's okay and the planning board's judgments about what's okay. Don't often align, so he has taken the position verbally with me. That he really doesn't want to be the arbiter of such things. And so I took that to mean like. If we, the planning board, are relying on the building inspector. To make some of these judgments, we may. Well, we, we. We may find ourselves surprised.
He, he is paid to be the zoning enforcement officer.
I hear you. I'm also telling you what he told me.
Yeah. I would say that, right, he too.
Yeah, yeah. One of the things that we did talk about is at least trying to. Improve some communication between. Both sides about what we are approving and because he seems to feel he doesn't often know what we've approved. So we won't go into this here. I wonder if, let me just look. Since we're on the subject of marijuana manufacturing, we've completed the piece at Three River Road. We don't really have an agenda item related to Seven River Road. But I note that Tim Smith is here and a butter and a, somebody affected by the. Appreciate Tim's coming tonight. I reached out after Don and I visited. DMCTC's facilities at Seven River Road and at Three River Road. We thought we would, after hearing from Jared and learning about where they are and. On the, on both, both sites, Seven River Road and Three River Road. We wanted to make contact with the Butters, actually tried knocking on the door at thirteen River Road. But nobody was home and only, I made my best effort to try to reach Mr. Smith. So, sorry if I upset your daughter by speaking or voicemail, but I'm glad we were able to get in touch. And Tim, I've shared your letter with the rest of the planning board. And maybe we. It's not officially on our agenda, but.
Why don't we move that to a, Brett? Why don't we wait till we get to other?
Okay, what?
Mr. Smith is here, right?
Yeah.
Would be courteous to.
I, I might recommend that we. Make, yeah, be courteous of Tim's time and if there's anyone else here who has. An issue on this. So, Tim, I'd like to give you the floor to maybe. In your own words, say what you passed on to us or, you know, any other comments that you want to share about your experience. As a butter of the. Seven River Road operation.
Yeah, sure. Well, like I said, my, my biggest concern was going to be the odor coming across. And I didn't realize they were in harvest right now. But it's definitely, you, you can notice it, you smell it, depending which way the wind's blowing or if it's a dead wind. But it's definitely there. But Jared's been real good. If I have an issue, he does address it pretty fast and. I'll just wait and see what the. Harvest does, I guess. I'd have to go a full year, a cycle of full production to really. Get a, a feel of what it's going to do, you know, it's, I think it's early in harvest. I, I just don't know what, what to expect. And I'd hate to make a judgment now until you go through a full growing season from start to end. And a full cycle of everything that's going to go on with the greenhouses and production. So, so far, I, I, I don't have a real issue with it. I mean, I think we're early in it, but so far, so good, you know. You know, good guys to have his neighbors. If I had a problem, they, they address it. But I'd just like to keep it open for the future, you know. So I, I don't really have a, an issue with what's going on yet until there's a full cycle that's been completed, I guess.
Well, thank you for sharing that. I guess what I. I was relatively newly on the board when all of this came up and I have to say that. I haven't forgotten the comments you made as a, and a butter before anything was there. And these things, things are very agonizing for a member of a planning board. Because, you know, I'm not living here, I'm not the one who's affected. And it's challenging to balance a butter rights with the interests of the town. So maybe what I really want to convey is that. I want you to know that we're. I want to keep the lines of communication open so that, like, the reason why Don and I went out there is because we had no idea. Over the last year about what's been going on. Has it been a problem? We've approved other cultivation and operations in town. And we don't have a lot of experience in Waitly about odor. We don't have a lot of experience about noise. And we know there are other Butters that are concerned and, and for better, for worse, Tim, you're kind of like. Well, I don't want to say canary in the coal mine. But you are, you are our best, like, noise and odor sensor and our best source of. Advice about how much of a problem this is, how persistent it is, how annoying it is. Such that we can do better if. In the future. So I really want to make sure that if, if things are going on that are a concern to you. I don't want you to feel like we don't want to hear from you, quite the opposite.
And are you, or have you thought about keeping a journal or sort of a diary or?
Uh, no, not really. Yeah, I could, I could do that, just jot it down, notes on, on a document on the computer.
You know, just keep track of. How bad the wind is. How many days it's a problem, that kind of thing.
Yeah, it's, it's odd, the odor.
If there is a problem, if there's, if there isn't, then fine, but.
Yeah, like when I came home, like when I came home from work today, I could smell it coming in the driveway. But, you know, an hour in the house and I went back outside in whatever way the wind's blowing, it, it took it a different way. So it's, I don't know, I really got to live with it, you know, see what a cycle, a grow cycle's like. As far as noises, it doesn't seem to be any noise other than any other farm or town. It's probably even less noise since it's so much hand, hand operation, so.
And, and I'll say that was also of interest, at least to me personally, having been to the Seven Road, Seven River Road site. You know, they have these electric ventilation fans running, blowing to the south. But for example, over at the Green Jeans operation that we approved on Christian. A Butters were concerned about fan noise. So I was wondering like, well, are you. Disturbed by fans running all night long or things like that? It seems like not.
No, my house is far enough away from their greenhouse and behind the barns. You, you don't hear that unless you go out back and then it's just, it's just greenhouse noise. So I, that's not an issue, not for me anyways.
Okay. So again, I just want to underscore that I don't want you to think of yourself as complaining. I think of, I, I want to encourage you to think of yourself as doing a service for the planning board. By being there in ways, you know, we can't be. And helping us understand the kind of impacts that an operation like this, because there is, it, it seems like there is the potential for this. Operation and others like it. Operation and others like it to provide. Additional helpful revenue to the town that we would all benefit from. But it can't come at the cost of making individual abutters lives miserable, so I I want to make sure we're not doing that. Great. Okay.
Hey, the next thing on the agenda is the upgrades to the zoning map.
Yeah, Judy, do you and I, there's a whole bunch of emails we exchanged with Brian about this. Do you feel like you can summarize that?
I was counting on you to have it.
Okay.
But I can I can do my best. I would like to start off with one item that. Um, I chatted briefly with Peggy Sloan. About the. Home occupation by law change that I was drafting and. And, um.
Oh, wait, wait, hold on a second, Judy. Um, I think we're discussing zoning map.
I know.
zoning map revision. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were going on to potential bylaw revisions.
No, I just wanted to explain why I was talking to Peggy. I. We got somehow onto the subject of zoning maps. Oh, we were on the floodplain. And I asked about the. Overlapping of. Different. Overlay districts and how that was handled. And she was quite surprised and and extremely concerned. That we were thinking of putting the floodplain district on the map. She said, no, you should not do that. It should definitely not go there. Because it's the. It's the copy at the assessor's office that matters. You don't want that on the map. So that's a very significant change from. What we've been talking about and not. Not on Brian's memo or emails. I think his concerns, if I'm. The ones I remember that it was. That one, there's some, there are errors and and I. We can outline those later. Two, he he found it hard to read. And I think some of that may be caused by the the floodplain overlay. But also that it was difficult to. To discern the parcels. As I remember. I think he also wanted a a very careful review to see that we. There weren't any other. Other errors that we had perhaps not caught.
And I'm sharing the email from Brian. Where I think he did a good job of summarizing his concerns about our official zoning map. So one is he seems like he can't find the official zoning map anymore. There's one posted online that he'd never seen before, and I was Brian, our town administrator. And we have this. This, I think, this still sort of unresolved issue about PPE is pine plains estates.
I know that's that's resolved. That's very clearly AR one.
Okay. Uh, though I think he had some questions about documentation that we have that added.
Not what his email said. He said, if Judy's, if Judy's outline of facts is correct, then it's AR one. So I think all you have to do is know that the site plan. That the subdivision application was filed before AR two was created. The. There was no such thing as AR one or two.
Okay.
Subdivision filing the subdivision plan, um, supersede. Any zoning change, so it's. It was in AR. It wasn't ag res. It is an area with streets, public ways. It's clearly an AR one. It never was an AR two.
So it may just be that we need to get these facts sort of out of your head and written down.
I sent an email to that effect to you and I am.
All right, I'll dig that up and make sure that we we have that. But it seemed like there he did have some questions about the. The readability of the online map. And I guess I. Took it that there's a. There should be an official paper map maintained at town offices, and then there's this online map that seems to be. Difficult to read. So how do we? You know, is this something where, say. We were, we get clarity with Brian about what we need to do in terms of generating a a proper paper map and a proper digital map. And then produce those products and.
Well, first, I would think that we. Fix the mistakes that we know about the other, the one that's not. There is that. Sue Monahan's property is shown as commercial when it's not.
Um, let me bring up the map. If you make, let me, uh. Sheriff. Sarah.
Yes, you should be able to.
Okay, so this is the map that's existing right now. And. The pine plains estate have been. Uh, corrected. The roads have been put in. Michkowski has been corrected. These flood zones. Are there for general reference only. It's, I probably need to put on here that. For actual flood zone, you need to use the FEMA's maps. I think we could take care of that just by. Um, with an annotation on here.
I think you need to take the floodplain references off. This is a zoning map. And and if she says you don't want any reference to floodplain zoning on the map, we shouldn't have it.
That's all I gotta do is turn it off.
Yeah, um. And it it should have somewhere in very large letters that the floodplain. District is not shown on this map.
Excuse me?
Somewhere it should indicate that the floodplain district is not shown on this map and that. People should consult the this map in the assessor's office for. For its boundaries.
All right, so just put a note on there that the flood zone is not shown and where to find it.
Yeah, a very prominent.
All right.
You know, what will we have is a zoning district that's not on the zoning map and people need to be aware of that.
Judy, does that apply to the aquifer overlay districts as well?
No, 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 no. Those are defined by the map, by this map.
Okay.
With the digital map like this, one of the, one of the good things is, is that you can. Uh, maybe if I. Not getting that zoom here. Oh, normally, oh, all right. I'm losing, I'm so high, I don't have my. Zoom tools on here, but normally.
Okay, we don't need to do it now. We should just talk through the suggestions. Hit the other, the other error is was the Wendelowski property. Now the money. The one that was Wendelowski that's now Monahan. It was shown as commercial and it never got rezoned.
Right here?
Well, it's one of those commercial ones.
One. Yeah. I'm having a hard time seeing that. I think it's.
I don't think, I don't, I'm not sure we need to fix it.
Yeah.
Right now, anyway.
Yeah.
Sarah.
As far as I know, these have been, this has been approved. And the part that was, they wanted to approve was in here, and that has not been approved.
Right.
Well, it was showing. I mean, Sue Monahan was right. It shows on the assessor's map. On on the diagram on the assessors as being commercial. So I think. Just go back and check and make sure.
Judy, when you speak of the assessors map, do you mean like a physical document in the assessor's office? Or the online GIS system map?
Both. In the last, last reference, I meant the physical one, but um, this last one, I meant the online GIS one.
And how does the, how does the paper one get produced?
And who's. I created in ArcMap and exported it to Adobe Illustrator and then print them out as. Uh, PDFs.
No, but I think for the floodplain district, it's the FEMA map. And they produce it.
Understood. We're not, that's agreed. We've agreed the FEMA map is a separate map. So I'm just trying to.
But it's available in GIS, and that's where I imported it from.
Because I think there are three places that people are getting zoning district information. Um, there's a physical map. That is supposed in the assessor's office, or I'll just say in town offices, that is supposed to be the gold standard or the. The authoritative zoning map. So there's got to be a physical authoritative copy in town offices. That's source number one. Source number two is what we're looking at here, which is a PDF document. That is really for informational use only and is posted on the Wheatley website. In the planning board page. So that's the second source of information about zoning and zoning distance. And then the third source of information. Is the ArcGIS map when you turn on the zoning overlays. And it's not clear to me that all of these three sources are aligned with each other. And more and and more to the point that the version in the authoritative copy in town offices may not be accurate. So I think our goal is to bring all of these three sources. Into alignment, so they're all consistent with the same information. And. That it's made clear that the only authoritative copy is the physical copy in town offices and the other two are just for informational use. Is there anything I've said that's inaccurate?
Well, the. Um, there may have been updates made to this map, which is then exported. Uh, and put in by the people who add layers to our. Uh, assessors map online. That may not have been updated at this point, but basically. Uh, the information on both the online GIS and this should be the same.
Should be.
Should be.
But there's a lag time, right? I mean, you can get information to the ArcGIS people, but they don't.
They they have, they have dated right away.
They do.
Yeah, but I'm not sure. Which one they have at this point. Uh, I've made some changes. And. I would have to take another look at it. But I'm still wondering, Judy. Where is? Is it true that you feel that this area here is commercial?
I think some of that is, but I'm not sure. I don't remember the parcel numbers and I think you have to. I think one of, one of Brian's comments is it would be helpful to have the parcels on the map rather than the topography. But that's, that's a different issue. I think you need to go and look specifically. At the Wendelowski parcel and make sure it's shown as AR. AR one. Or as ag res, whatever, whatever it is.
Well, that that parcel would be up here.
No, that's not the parcel.
Down here?
No. My name is Sandy. I'm the butter to the property that Sue Monahan has. This section down here. Which is Kyle's. You had approved as commercial. This section next to mine that loops around behind, that is still agricultural. And here, yes, there. And around the corner. Which is abutting my property. That is Sue Monahan's, and that is supposed to be agricultural.
It was my understanding that the lot that they want, that they bought was right in here.
No.
Well, I can't see anything that you're pointing at, so.
And if I could jump in, it's rich for asking, I appreciate the opportunity here. If you look at that parcel that shaded, there's, it looks like two structures within there.
Yep.
All right, the second structure north. Is the beginning of the second parcel.
Right here?
No, go down.
Right here.
That's the beginning of the second particle. So if you go all the way back towards pond. It it cuts it off. Yep, it cuts it off and then in north of that barn should be agricultural one.
Okay. Well, that's an easy fix.
Yes.
Yeah, well, go back and look at the parcels and.
Yeah, it's just twenty four and twenty four one. What that one with the jog out in the second farther north barn, that's part of twenty four two, and that's what was not. Approved. That parcel of Sue Monahan's was not approved at all for commercial.
Right.
Right.
So I I I think that perhaps what happened is that. When I did this. I made an error and thought that it had been. Uh, so I will go ahead and fix that. So cut it off there. All right, I'm. I know what I've got for my work cut out, so any other comments?
So just to clarify, you're going, so you're gonna update this. So that the right parcel, particularly the right. Commercial districts are shown. And then you're going to. Get this data into the GIS system. Provide a new PDF, potentially if.
I don't, wait a minute, wait. Um, I don't know at what point it gets into the GIS system. We have to. Approve, have the map approved by the Attorney General.
Uh huh.
And I think that Brian should certainly sign off and. I don't know about anybody else. What, wasn't there a comment on his email about parcels being hard? Something about the topography?
He said, using the topographic base map. Makes the zoning map extremely difficult to read or use. Not only are the elevation lines a distraction. But the other colors, light green in the base layer, make comprehending the map way more difficult. His his last two comments are graphic design questions. They're not zoning, zoning like questions. It's about graphic design and interpretability of the graphic presentation.
Well. Yeah, but he he feels that the readability of it is important.
Yeah, right. Yes, absolutely. And then he said the diagonal hatching and vertical hatching for the actual overlay districts likewise likewise. Makes the map difficult to read. Says readability questions about the map and usability, and and we should address those somehow, and maybe it's producing. I don't know, more than one version?
Maybe we can ask Hannah to check other towns' overlay districts and how they're shown.
But so I want to understand, Judy, this process you're describing, so we can. Come up with a corrected map. And then this map needs to be submitted in some format to the Attorney General's office? With, with, with anything? Just a map?
But it has to go, it has to go to town meeting for approval.
Okay. Oh, that would be fun.
Well, I don't know. It's just a, it will be just a routine vote. Lynn was, Lynn before she resigned as town clerk, was very concerned that some changes had been made. That hadn't been formally approved at town meeting. And, and I'm not entirely sure what, what, I think it was a couple of things where we found that a district was zoned differently than it was shown on the map, and we corrected it, that kind of thing. But I'm not sure. But she felt that rather than, and this was back probably last December. She felt that rather than just having the, the addition of any changes we made approved for the map, that we ought to just revoke the whole thing.
Okay.
And, and that was before the, the concerns about things that were incorrect that we, we've just talked about. So um, she had requested just, just make sure. Make, just make sure that everything has formally been approved.
Okay. So is this something that we're doing at next annual town meeting in 2023?
I think as we, as soon as we're ready, we take it to the next special town meeting. I mean, this, what we're not doing is making any changes. We're ratifying past changes.
Okay.
We're not making any zoning changes.
Yeah.
We're just documenting the ones that we have already made. It should just be a pro forma vote.
Okay. All right. So we have clear actions and timeline? Is that correct?
I'll just work, I'll just work with the town clerk and get this straightened out.
All right. I'm happy to help support that. In any way I can, can, Don, you're the whiz of all the GIS systems.
Well, do we wanna find out how other people handle overlay districts or not?
Well, I've looked at, at a lot of them. And basically, most towns use quad sheets, which is what we're using. And then overlay all their other stuff on it. Um, the last official map that we had, we switched to aerial photographs. And a lot of people um, didn't think that that was as useful as the quad sheets. And then there was a comment that some of the barns that are on these older quad sheets are no longer there. Uh, but uh, basically, most of.
Does it really matter?
Yeah.
I will say I find this more legible than our last one with the green base. So, thank you, Don.
Yeah, I like it better myself. All right. So, moving on.
Potential bylaw revisions. So Judy, it, I think you have some things, is it, this may also be at just a time, especially with Rich Kupiasky on the line, to uh, mention the communication we've had with him and his response. So maybe I'll take that as an opening. So um, at our last planning board meeting where we were debriefing on annual town meeting and the, uh, the failure to rezone the Monahan parcel. Uh, we kind of, we noted that Rich Kupi- and Rich, I wanna make sure I'm pronouncing your last name right. Is it? Per- Perkeski, because I know Lisa, and she always said Kupiasky.
No, she always says Kupiasky.
Kupiasky. All right. Thank you. Um, so we felt we should at least reach out to Rich because he wasn't sort of a de facto spokesperson for uh, residents in commercial districts and how they are impacted by commercial businesses and the zoning that relates to that. And I think Rich had a very reasonable response. Uh, and I'll deal with Florida Rich in a moment, but I'm just sort of summarizing that. He felt that other, a butter, other residents in the commercial district ought to be. We, we ought to reach out to them and solicit gen- feedback generally about how people are feeling in the commercial and industrial districts and whether we should be considering bylaw changes and bylaw revisions to address their concerns. Is that a reasonable summary? Rich, would you like to expand on that in any way? The floor is yours.
Yeah, well, thank you. I really appreciate that. And I thank for the invitation. As a lifelong resident of, of Whately and living on Route Five. I, I realize that the character of Route Five has changed, you know, appreciably. And there's some background, sorry. And so what I was concerned about was this slippery slope that seems to be edging into town where uh, as the commercial interests start coming in um, and taking advantage of what Whately has to offer, and we have the ability to garner tax revenue from that. There seems to be a, um, a liberal a, a, approach to utilizing bylaw and in enforcement. And I know that there's a mechanism for enforcement and bylaws, but I know that what, what seems to be happening is an apathy to um, following the rules set by the board within the bylaws. And my concern with that was how it affects adjacent residential homes. And how it will eventually, because the, the commercial zone will eventually work its way north on Route Five, I'm sure, within the next, you know, fifteen, twenty years, maybe within the next five. And it's already encroaching or attempting to encroach its way up past on the other side of ninety-one. And what happens is each and every resident who has, was adjacent to a potential commercial zone will have to deal with the consequences of the proprietor of that commercial zone. And how they manage and what they believe their liberties can be while they're utilizing that space. Um, I can speak of myself personally. Uh, I can speak of conversations I've had with other people in just where their concerns were particularly in lighting and how lighting doesn't seem to follow uh, the bylaws in any particular way. Um, signage is questionable um, and noise and a buffer zone seem to be a concern. And I, I've talked with a number of people over the years concerning lighting into oncoming traffic. And, and it would, the, the, the difficulty I have with it. Is there's a lot of discern, discernment to it. Not a lot of people appreciate the excess lighting, because what that's done is it's taken our rural town-like features of, of Whately, and it's changed it considerably. And then you drive through it, and it's like you deal with it as you drive through it, and you don't like it, but when you go home, you're fine. Until that shows up on your doorstep further north. And then that's my concern, is each individual family has to deal with it. At first, it starts with, you know, one building. Um, and, and again, I, I have to stress, I don't have, I don't have concerns or, or quarrels with, you know, the business is unrepived. But I do have concerns of the precedent that's being set. Because what, when you start setting a precedent of excessive lighting and this dark skies possibility that we, that we're losing and will forever lose, that will, i- it, it's hard to tell a new business, well, you know, you got your lights shining into the oncoming traffic, it's shining on your neighbor's lawn. And they'll complain, well, you know, other, other properties are doing that. Why are you complaining to me? So a- as we're losing the ability to enforce or expect that good practice shouldn't sue. Eventually, what I see happening is as the commercial zone moves forward and moves north, that lighting problem becomes more egregious and more difficult to manage. What, you know, we're, the bylaws allow or don't allow for lighting um, to, to lead the property line. Yet, and then a certain lighting is, is considered uh, restricted, I would guess to say best way. But security lighting kind of moots the point of all of that. So once you decide to call it security lighting, then all of a sudden, all the other factors that the planning board may have put in place during the planning process kind of disappear. So the bylaws are easily circumvented. And, and I think that um, enforcement is difficult. My conversations with the building inspector over the years, uh, whereas, you know, Don was mentioning, I mean, he, his conversations with me were that it's difficult to assess what the planning board intends and how he is to enforce that intention and uh, under a number of different factors. Uh, one that came up in twenty twenty was the public hearing of November tenth. Um, with my neighbor with the uh, uh, with the schoolhouse. And again, I have no quarrel with my neighbor, the good neighbors so far. But during that meeting, if you were to go back and, and revisit it, was at the beginning of the meeting, um, the idea of um, having a parking area twenty feet from a residential use. And the twenty feet indicated in the beginning of the meeting that the, you'd have twenty feet. It would be the burden of the prop, of the business owner, the commercial interest. And then somewhere along during the meeting, that moved to the boundary line. And the concern I have with things like that are that all buildings need to be twenty feet from a property line, so that bylaw is kind of a move point. It, it doesn't really provide any strength or, or, there's nothing to it that allows any protections. So defining what a residential use is um, really helps identify what, how that bylaw would be implied. But on the same token, if I have a property that's my residential property and my yard is my residential use, how does the board define that versus the, my residential home, which has to be twenty feet away from the property line anyway? So there's, there are places within the bylaws where I see it's difficult to enforce. And it's difficult, it's easy to overlook, it's easy to circumvent. And I think that what happens when you're dealing with residential homes on, on your way up through Route Five is each residential home will have to fight these same battles. And, and the mechanism that we use so far is to make the residential homeowner take charge against their neighbor. So what ends up happening is if your neighbor is not malleable to abiding by those changes, there becomes that conflict between neighbor and neighbor through the building inspector. And then you, you struggle with the building inspector trying very hard to understand the direction of the board. And with that, um, there's a, a, a difficulty of being able to know what we can expect as residents, you know? And I think that what the board can do, and I think we could all live together realistically, commercial zone with residential zone, but I think that by, binding commercial properties to identify and, and making the bylaws so they're, that it's a lot easier to understand what the boundaries are, a lot easier to enforce those boundaries. Al- allows the commercial zone to be able to have what they need without excess. And allows the residential character to continue to be residential character. Because one of the things I see, and I, up at the library, looking down in the valley during the family day, I was thinking about what it would look like at night. And what would happen over the course of the next five, ten, twenty years when you completely engulf that area with commercialism? And you have not checked the lighting or the noise with the hours of operation. And what you would see is, is what you see from UMass is this massive glow in the valley. And what you would see not during the summer would be enhanced during the winter. So it would start affecting everyone within the town. But by that point, it's too late. By that point, the complaints and the noise that, you know, our neighbors are gonna have at that point, we can't do much about, because we've already set the precedent that should have been addressed far earlier. And so by, by standing up and speaking, what I realized was, and I, I, to this day, I have, I have no idea what I said. It just serendipitously came out. But what I realized by talking with other people after the fact was there's the folks who voted against the expansionism did so because they wanted to keep the character of Whately, a small town. And, and do, trying to keep that character a small town means that we have to put harnesses on liberties taken on the bylaws. You know, I can speak of, you know, local businesses that I struggle with trying to understand the excess of lighting. And I know security is an important factor, but there seems to be a willingness to extend that to, to impeach on the neighbors without consideration of the neighbors. And I think that once that, it becomes a precedent, and that works its way up Route Five. Not only will the neighbors on Route Five dealing with it, but also you folks up on the hill, you're gonna deal with it too, because you're gonna have this massive glow, and particularly in the wintertime. Because right here in the summertime, it's not, you know, it's tough. But in the wintertime, when there's no leaves, you know, particularly after snow, is an awful lot of lightning. And then that peace and tranquility that brought everyone to Whately will start to diminish and tear the park. And I don't wanna see that. I mean, I've been a lifelong resident here. And my family's been here, and we've seen this change. But, you know, Whately was this amazing little wonderful town when I was a kid. Um, and it still is. And it still has this incredible potential. But not considering the effects of commercialism within the town and, and the liberties taken um, by the bylaws i- in that pursuit of commercialism will eventually come back to bite each and every one of us, I believe. And what I see, you know, with, you know, the expansion of the property that I was concerned about was that we've taken what, you know, what was considered a home business that didn't become a home business because of liberties taken and because of conflicts with understanding how the building inspector would interpret one thing versus the board. And that conflict of interest, as I would see it, allows for this expansionism that, you know, becomes a little bit more than what was expected. And if that continues, if that proliferates, eventually you'll start hearing the noise. And you'll start realizing that most people don't wanna be on Route Five. Or Route Five used to be, you know, the scenic route. We used to be the scenic route. And eventually, we won't be the scenic route anymore. And eventually, people won't wanna come down Route Five, because it'll be like going down Route Nine. If you have to, then you have to. But if you can avoid it, just take ninety-one. We'll lose that character. And I don't think we wanna do that. I think the vote and the, and the people that spoke to me after the vote encouraging me made me believe and understand that the town at large, even though it was a small demographic in the voting population, doesn't wanna see that either. They don't wanna see this proliferation take hold and, and, and air itself on, uh, I don't wanna say abuse, because I don't think it's fair, um, but on liberties. And those liberties that benefit, you know, a, a, a business owner that lives out of Whately. Who, when they leave their business and they leave Whately, you know, they go back to a nice dark space and they're comfortable where they are. Everybody else, we all have to live with the ramifications left behind until the next day. Um, again, I don't wanna, uh, I don't have any ill feelings for my neighbors. I, I, I want them to succeed. I want them to provide to the tax base. I want them to be productive parts of the community within Whately. Um, and I wanna encourage that, as I think we all do. But I, I really, really think that liberties taken are, are, are something that we need to rein. Really, really think that liberties taken are 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 something that we need to rein back. We need to put more consideration within the bylaws to be able to protect. That character that we're so easily losing. I mean, if you go down Route Five in the middle of the night. You know, the light hits you in the face on a couple of occasions, a couple of different businesses. And all of a sudden, when you allow that to continue. When more business comes in and starts doing the same thing, eventually what you'll see is, you know, the glow of UMass on Route Five.
Rich, um, if I could interrupt you just a second. I'm I'm hearing two threads in what you're saying. O- o- one thread is actual taking residential land or a commercial or agricultural land. And rezoning that into commercial, into commercial use. The other thread is what happens once that hap- that takes place, that rezoning has taken place. And protection of a butters through bylaws. So, and what you're you're saying is there's an inevitability that that five, ten corridor is going to become commercialized. That that's, that there, once that happens, when and you fine tune your bylaws the way you want them. To to take these things into effect that you've been describing. It's still, it's still going to impact the people living in a residential district. And if you look at Hadley on Route Nine, all the abandoned single-family homes that are through there. That's because of their following the bylaws, the commercial district are doing it. And not, and it becomes su- no longer becomes suitable in the ways that you're describing a small-town Whately. And, um, so I think once you turn that corner and say it's going to be commercial. It is going to be a commercial activity, and no matter how fine-tuned those bylaws are going to be, it's going to change the character. If you, if you put in. A this store, it's going to have traffic coming in and headlights and all that. The question is, do you rezone it and allow those bylaws to be put to to go into effect? And are you comfortable with that? So, tha- that's my observation of what you're saying. But I think there are two, two things that I'm hearing from you that are slightly different. One. The rezoning of land that's not commercial already into commercial, that's one step. And then two, the bylaws, once that has taken place, the bylaws within that commercial district. That tries to maintain the character that you've been describing of a small-town rural area.
Well, if I can reflect on that, when I wa- drive through Route Five in Hatfield, I noticed that the signage. Um, is quite dull and almost difficult to read in some cases, because their bylaws, if I understand correctly, allow. Or require that that lighting be muted. Where we don't necessarily have that. Would I also notice that their, um. Parking lighting is muted as well. It's not egregious and it it it's not. Um, overly zealous in that respect, and I think it's well enforced. I don't believe that same. But I think that's what's encouraging people to come to Whately is that there's a laxed understanding of whether or something will be fully enforced. And to what degree and how that gets enforced. And my concern is that what the system is now is you take and you place a property owner. In conflict with their direct conflict with their neighbor, which isn't a good thing to do. By making a complaint. And if you're, if your neighbor. If the, if the commercial owner is is reticent to make any changes without, you know, being pushed. It's an awful uncomfortable place to do, and that's gonna be for every family moving north from here. And I I know that from speaking with the people that I spoke to during the town meeting. That they don't want this expansionism to resemble Route Nine. They don't. And that's why, all, that's why the vote reflected. You know, what it did. And I think that. If the board recognizes that there's a need to keep the small-town feel and puts. Guardrails within the bylaws and enforcements within the bylaws that allow for that small-town feel to continue. Will be a lot happier as a whole. Uh, I I I'm concerned, as a lifelong resident, I'm concerned of. Seeing those abandoned houses on Route Nine and what that can, how that would reflect here. It very easily could. And I know that there's a larger part of Whately that's residential that isn't affected by commercialism. Actually, most of the town isn't convert, you know, isn't affected by commercialism. There is a minimum amount of homes that are, but we still are your neighbors. We still pay our taxes, we still, you know, get involved in town events when we have able to. Um, and we still matter and we should still count. And, um, I would hope the board would, you know. Reiterate that same affection.
So, I'd like to just thank, take a moment to thank you, Rich, for sharing all of this. I've taken notes. I don't think we were planning or expecting tonight to, you know, fully, I think. We're not gonna fully discuss this. We're not gonna make any decisions tonight about this. And you've given us a lot to think about, and I think you've also, through your email, made a recommendation that I think is a very good one. That I intend to take you up on and and I may enlist your help. Uh, in in executing, but finding a way to engage all, at least reach out to. All of those residing in the commercial district to to get their perspectives on this as well. Because I've been hearing comments about concerns about enforcement, and where there's, and we could have a long discussion, which we're not going to. About how enforcement is or is not done in Whately, um, and how that might or might not be improved. I have specific concerns about zoning bylaws and enforcement of bylaws as they relate to lighting and noise. And, uh, things like that. I I definitely noted the phrase liberties taken, used multiple times in your comments. So, this is all, um, I think very helpful.
Before you, I have specific question. The one. Commercial enterprise that I can think of. That the planning board has approved that's operational in the last ten years is muffins. Do you have issues with with the lighting or noise there?
You speaking to myself?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the lighting is excessive excessive. I think that, uh, it could be. I- i- if if the bylaws require it to not leave the the property and the boundaries, and as you can see, driving through there, it obviously does. And it's not supposed to be into oncoming traffic, which is a concern for many, and then it does. And I think that. The, um, you know, it reflects onto adjacent properties. I know that I have to, you know, deal with windows and issues. And my con- my conversations with the owner was, his response was just to get a shade. Um, I try to find a. Diplomatic way of addressing it and then try not to be in conflict with my neighbor, because I don't want to be. Um, I know I have a right to be, but I find that in in the best interest of. Getting along within the town, unfortunately. It puts me in conflict with them. It doesn't do me.
No, you've made that point. I just.
You know, I've got, we've got additional signage, lighting, you know, reflecting onto adjacent properties into oncoming traffic. There's screening that was supposed to be placed there and noise because of lack of screening. A- again, I I'm struggling because I don't wanna place, I don't wanna focus on that concern in general. I wanted to be more general about. All of it, instead of focusing on my grievances, because I think my grievances are mine. And yes, I would hope board would take consideration of those, but also my biggest concern. Is how that proliferates and becomes a precedent that works its way throughout the town at this point. When, you know, once we set a precedent. It's difficult to change that precedent. And once, you know, many people set the same precedent and take those same liberties, it becomes harder and harder and harder. And I understand what the board's trying to do. The board is trying to make it attractive for for businesses to come in the way, and I agree that, I applaud that. But on the same token, we can't sacrifice good practice. You know, and if somebody's going to be a good neighbor, they should be a good neighbor.
That's great. Thank you, Rich.
And I'd like to make one other clarification, please.
This is Sandy?
Yep.
Hi Sandy.
Hi, um, Judy said about the, uh, recent commercial was last one was was muffins. You also approved Kyle Monahan's to commercial as well.
No, we approved the zoning change after the build, after the. After the project was established. We didn't, we never formally approved the project.
Yes. Yes, there is.
It was built, it was built as a home occupation.
Correct, but it is not. It is now commercial.
It is now zoned commercial, but I don't believe the occupation has changed. I don't think the business itself has changed.
If if I can jump in here, this is one of the concerns that I have is is this type of, you know, if we create, allow home occupation. A circumventing of the bylaws by creating a home occupation that resembles a a a full-blown commercial. And and I know it it worked out for the town that we created a commercial space and we've got the commercial.
I don't think that the planning board is all happy with this situation.
I'm sure. All the more reason why I speak up to, you know, encourage the planning board to consider, uh, if there's.
And actually, we would have had, well, I guess I'll stop there. It's not true. Never mind.
Judy, you got any other bylaw revisions you would like to speak about?
Well, I did talk to Peggy Sloan about the home occupation one and the draft that I had showed the group last time. And she had some concerns with it. And we wrestled with it for about half an hour and decided that it was virtually impossible. To come up with a meaningful.
Definition.
Definition or or restriction, I guess is the word, for. For adult-use products. And. She did agree that she thought that it was highly unlikely, given the expense and. Onerous requirements of the CCC that marijuana wannabe delivery would ever, or courier. Would ever be, especially delivery, would ever be a home occupation. So, I think unless somebody senses a. Groundswell of desire within the town to. To impose such a, to try and put a restriction in, I I prefer to just leave it for now.
Well, I I see that as a home occupation simply because all you are doing is getting stuff in on your computer. And saying, it needs to go to this person. So. Basically, bringing marijuana into the town is probably not even gonna happen. It's just gonna be. Exactly like a delivery service where you go pick up something and take it somewhere else and. You know, it it just, that portion of it never, never really came through. It's basically just a. A computer-based operation completely, as far as the home goes, but. So many people are so averse to anything marijuana that, um, it's pretty easy to. To, uh. Assume that it's evil evil. And I mean. I'll get off my soapbox at this point.
My issue, I don't think I have a problem with delivery. Courier brings up safety issues for a butters. So, I'm delivery, long as you're picking it up somewhere, delivering it, and that's it. But it's the courier where you're storing it in your home that.
I think it's actually flipped, Sarah.
Yes, I knew it was probably.
Really hard to keep straight.
Ones where you store it in your home. I think brings up. Safety issues for neighbors in terms of security and how somebody is securing those things in their home.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Would that be, but is that different than, say, firearms or? Alcohol?
No, because I think the marijuana goes with, will automatically go with firearms.
Well, I mean.
Right, I need to say. So, I am the proud owner of firearms. Um, they are.
No, but you're not, you're not retailing firearms. Or wholesaling, but you're not.
Delivery, the one that's in your home, you're not gonna have that without firearms.
No, no, I'm saying a business that's a.
Oh, see, I.
I'd say, say you sell.
We're not, if with a firearms business, we can put many conditions on it in many reasons, but if it's a. Storing marijuana in your home, there's no.
Assume it's a home occupation.
Right.
Firearms business. What restrictions can we put on?
True.
We have none, you know. There's no, people can just leave them loose in their basement. Big bags of ammunition and just sell them.
Takes them away, FedEx.
Right. I thought you were saying, Sarah, that if you're going to have a home occupation marijuana delivery business and store marijuana in your basement. You're also gonna have firearms to defend your stash of marijuana.
Right, and that leads to. Yeah, I don't have, I have less of an issue with firearms not involving marijuana. So, it's when you get them together.
Yeah.
And alcohol, that issues happen.
Yeah. Let's move on to the approval of minutes. I concur with that. I do think we should continue to have this discussion at our next regular meeting about potential bylaw revisions. I wanna, just before we ran out, mention that. One of the manufact- one of the marijuana operations in town did ask me a question of. What's our position or what's Whately's position on social consumption of marijuana?
I meant to bring that up too.
Yeah, so we may have to, n- now's not the time.
I think we need to do is to clarify our retail marijuana. Use. To specify that it does not include social consumption be- or onsite consumption. Because that's not clear now, and I'm sure that wasn't intended.
Um, I think it's pretty clear that. Where you sell it, you cannot smoke it.
No, it's not in our bylaw. And the the way the CCC. CCC is written is that, um, as long as you have a. A retailer can have a social club license. So, um, I think we need to specify that retail does not include onsite consumption. I think we have a couple of years to do that.
Categories, though. You need the the social, you cannot. Uh, unless you make your retail place also adjoining as a social. You could, you can, you can't li- light up in a, in a store, period. So, so we should figure this out, but maybe.
We should figure this out. We need to understand Whately's smoking.
Yeah.
Regulations, which I don't know.
It's also, um. I believe reading some of our. Applicants in towns blogs or messages. To the public when they're recruiting fundraising funds. There's been things about, said about, oh, stop by anytime. And oh, yes, we're looking forward to putting in a. Having a social place for consumption. And this is, happens to be the one next door to me, which is a strictly growing facility. So, I think there's a lot of. Not understanding of whether that is just a sales pitch or very much not understanding, definitely in the public. Of the. What is allowed at certain places. So.
All right, so we're gonna now approve some minutes, right, Don?
Minutes.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, great job, Mary. Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, I'll just kick this off by. Well, I'll just kick this off by um, making a motion. So I know that Judy and I have both reviewed, I'm just getting the minutes of, I think it was uh, it was, the first one was February 10th that just came out. And so Judy and I, they, my impression, Mary, is you did a great job. Minimal changes were needed. Judy made markups. Everything's in the OneDrive with her initials in mind in the file name. So I'm going to move that we approve the minutes of the February 10th meeting as amended. Second. All right. You're still chairing this, Don, so you can do your magic. Pregnant pause. So, all right, the, the, the motion has been made and seconded, so we're going to do a vote. Yes, to approve the minutes. Don, go for it.
It done, can't hear us.
Really?
I. I didn't follow what?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you, so we, the motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of the February 10th meeting as amended.
Right.
So we're doing a vote. Go ahead, Don.
Okay. Sarah?
Aye.
Don, aye. Tom?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Yay. All right. So, and then the next one. So, yeah, that's interesting. Did we have a meeting on February 22nd? Or was that the one that got, couldn't be held? Cause there's.
I think if it's, if it's on March 10th, it was because it was postponed from February 22nd, probably.
How could a meeting on March, February 10th be postponed from a meeting on February 22nd?
No, isn't it March 10th?
No, we're not there yet. So we just did February 10th. And actually, we had had a meeting scheduled on February 8th, and that was moved to February 10th. So we've approved February 10. We have a meeting folder for February 22nd. But did we have a meeting? There were no minutes for February 22nd.
Well, I'm wondering why we had one in the middle of the month on March 10th, so I suspect that the February 22nd one was postponed till the 22nd, but I can't.
The power went out.
I, I don't have my, my notebook.
And we, we couldn't convene? Maybe. That was, I'm looking at the agenda for February 22nd. And we are going to continue the public hearing for green jeans and do a public hearing for the a large scale solar development bylaw change.
I think there was, that one was the problem with the Zoom link.
Okay, so we did not have a meeting on the, we didn't actually have a meeting. We had a scheduled meeting on February 22nd, but we didn't actually meet. So there are no minutes.
It's when the meeting IDs were confused.
Okay. So then the next set of actual minutes that Mary circulated are for March 15th. And again, Judy and I have reviewed them and annotated them, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 15th as amended. Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote, Sarah?
Aye.
Don, aye. Brad?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Motion passed.
It does. Let me just also confirm, that was not the one with the the weird word about the evergreen tree. No, that's the next one. Okay, good. All right, good. So, good. So now we're on to April 26th. And that was the one I noticed, because Judy added a comment.
Just questioned what the word was. It's a description of a spruce, but I didn't.
Oh, yeah. It was, there is a word in the minutes, Mary.
You know what? Could you give me a page?
Yeah, it was page in the Word document. It looks like it's well, your page numbers don't align with the.
Yeah.
It's, it's page six. Six is at the bottom of the page.
Okay.
So it's, and it's in the part five, update on landscaping at 134 Christian Lane. You used the word replacement of a con color spruce.
And I said in my notes, I assumed that was part of its name.
Is, it is a con color is the, I believe it's a fir. It is the variety of the tree. It's got very long needles.
Is it properly spill? Is that the way you spell it?
Con color, C-O-N-C-O-L-O-R. They're really nice little trees.
All right, learned something today.
Me too. So is, so Sarah, as an expert on this, so is the proper description a con color spruce?
Let me confirm if it's a spruce or a fir.
So I'm going to delete my.
Fur, con color fur.
A con color, so I'm going to change the word spruce to fur.
Yep.
And, and actually, I'm going to, since somebody, I think anyway, I'm just going to put C-O-N-C-O-L-O-R.
Yes.
Okay. So I've just made that change in the minutes. I, I know I'm not sharing my screen, but you can all trust me. So, other than that.
Hey, under adjournment, uh, is brand, still brand, the D?
Under adjournment.
Yeah.
Uh, oh, yeah, you're right.
Oh, dear.
Sorry, I fixed that. Good catch. Um, so that's also changed. So I will now with that. Oh, and since we're talking about these minutes, those are the minutes where Larry Brotherton of 83 State Road came before and asked for feedback on his plan and then he sort of disappeared. I have been in touch with him and he does want us to keep this open. He's planning on coming back and making progress, so we should, he understands that we haven't signed his application. So it, it just remains.
Sleeping gentleman?
Yes. Okay, but other, but basically I'm, I'm moving to approve the minutes of our April 26th meeting as amended.
Second. Aye.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, Tom?
Aye.
Don, aye. Sarah?
Yes.
Brad?
Aye.
Judy?
Judy?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
All right, we're up to date. We're now well within the zone of uh, compliance with the open meeting law. Thank you very much, Mary.
You're welcome.
We will be when they're posted.
Yes, that's true. That's true.
I will finish them off and get them over.
Wonderful. Okay, I think we're at the end of our agenda, Don.
I think so. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So. I'll second that.
Okay, Sarah moved and Judy seconded, or maybe the other way, but I don't care.
Yeah.
Uh, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Being adjourned.
Okay.